I'd like to call to order the Concord Township Zoning Commission Meeting of Tuesday, May 6, 2025. Please join me saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everybody. Roll call. Heather, would you please?
Mr. Schindler.
Here.
Mr. Eiffelase.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Wirtel.
Here.
Mr. Repert.
Here. Everybody's here. First thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes for February 4, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I read through the February minutes. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? I have some discussion. It's just a question. On page 58, let me get it here. Page 58, you know what we're talking about? We're talking about the study by the trustees. And my question is, do we have a timetable for that? I know we made a motion and we approved the motion, but we didn't have a timetable in that. Did we discuss any timetable with the trustees?
We did. I know, we didn't. But we did stipulate somewhere in here, I believe, 18 months. Didn't wait till July 26?
Well, that's up here, right?
Yeah, we did. Yes, it's somewhere.
Is that for us? Or is that for the study?
This is ours. 56.
Yeah, that's for us. The thing on the agenda is for us to make a determination. But along with that, we asked the trustees to do the study for the area and sidewalks and so on and so forth.
Correct.
But we didn't give them a timetable.
I didn't know if we were authority to dictate a timetable.
Well, I don't know either.
But I felt, I felt we have the request and we have, or we could communicate that we do, we've extended this to July 26.
Okay. And I think Morgan knows that.
Yeah.
Because he came in with Chris Suss and he started, okay, I'll just make a phone call to Morgan and say, are you guys on the same timetable we are? Or maybe a little bit better?
Yeah.
Okay.
But to answer your question, I read there's nothing in the minutes that I, I didn't state any, yeah.
Okay, I just asked it when I saw it. When I saw it, we made the request. And normally when you do something like that, you say, do it by this time, which is what we did.
For us.
For us.
Yeah.
So, okay. End of discussion. Any other discussion on the February minutes? Hearing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Minutes are approved. Next is March, right? April.
April.
April, I'm sorry, we already did March. April 1st meeting. I have, I have two comments. And the first one is, under page 1, zoning inspector report, we say, the township administrator, Heather is talking here, jet administrator, a trustee, and Heather have spoken to the winning bidder, not the winner bidder, has to do with Quail. And then on page 4, halfway down, Mr. Peterson said, realistically, based on the land, we have, we have it likely won't happen. Won't is W-O-N apostrophe T.
Page 4, you said?
Mm-hmm. Page 4. Just a little bit over half, halfway down. Mr. Peterson, realistically, based on the land, we have it likely won't happen. And probably go to Leroy.
You're right.
That's the only comments I have on the April 9 minutes. Anybody else have any other comments on April? Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the April 1st, 2025 minutes corrected, as corrected.
I'll second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All those approve, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. April 1st meeting minutes are approved. And it's not an April 1st. Okay, next on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Schindler?
None, Mr. Chairman.
John?
None for me.
None?
None for me, Mr. Chairman.
Rich, number 2.
Mr. Chairman, I had 2, 2 separate inquiries about, relative about the same subject. Once I received these, the 2 questions, I did consult with Heather a bit. It's been a while since I've seen that section in our resolution. It's quite lengthy.
Yes.
So, the, the questions came, are basically 2 subjects revolving around temporary signs. One was, how long can a temporary sign stand? In this case, it's political. So, political signage post-election, it appears, it appears for my, and then the counsel with Heather, that trying to answer the question, there isn't any end date.
For political signs?
Correct.
I thought it was close to...
I thought it was the day after, right?
I thought it was within 15 days.
Not in our resolution.
Wow.
Perhaps ORC or some other, but let me finish the...
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
The second was permanent signs. And notably, there, there are, there's a permanent sign on the outbuilding, on 2 permanent signs, it would appear to be permanent signs on the outbuilding on Pinecrest Road, 2 sides of that outbuilding. And permanent political signs, I believe, are prohibited from the signs. So, that notwithstanding, I'm just bringing it up to perhaps, obviously defer to Heather and, and Bridie, that perhaps we consider it for discussion on a future meeting. There's a lot to unravel there, because the section is quite lengthy. And as I understand from Heather, there are, there are areas within the signs, sign resolution, section 30?
Yes.
I believe, that she's been wanting to update and address anyway. So, this might be an opportunity to put it on a future, than I have to take over, in, with those 2 questions kind of sitting there, that, that I couldn't answer.
Can't, Bridie, can we limit political signs?
No.
I didn't think we could.
Unfortunately, so if there is any, if there's any definitions or prohibitions in here specifically with respect to political speech, and actually, we should probably really look at our sign regulations, because it could even apply to commercial speech. There's a US Supreme Court case that came out fairly recently, that would probably mean that we should probably have another look at our sign regulations, just to make sure. Now, we might not be enforcing them, so, okay, but we should probably take a look.
So, you're saying to look in case we have something that's prohibiting it?
We should probably take a look, because we can't.
Because we can't.
To update, for sure.
Remember?
In light of the, yeah, the First Amendment. Again, it implies actually political and commercial speech.
Commercial.
Some, some commercial speech, it's a whole test and it's very confusing.
Yeah, yes.
But, yeah.
Could you give us an example of commercial speech?
So, I feel like the Reed case was actually commercial speech, and then I'm trying to figure out exactly what that was.
I apologize, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but it's just...
No, 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 but I can't remember. I just remember the case is Reed v. Gilbert.
Yeah.
And it's a US Supreme Court case, but there's a whole test now, even for commercial signs, because now that's considered also First Amendment as well. But political, you know, a lot of people say, well, if I live in a subdivision, I have HOA regulations that say political signs. Technically, they're not enforceable, but HOAs, a lot of HOAs have those.
Yes.
I will tell you, a lot of municipalities, a lot of communities do have a timeframe for when election signs can come, right? But I will tell you, there's lots of people that have, you know, permanent political signs.
Yes.
Sure are. Everywhere.
Those are allowed.
But from, not to belabor the subject, Mr. Chairman, soon we take this up, another time, but it appears that permanent signage is prohibited in our resolution.
Right, and I think that's probably something that needs to be...
And there's 2 signs, well, that was the one drawing my attention, because I see it every day.
But, but you're saying, if, if it's a political permanent sign, it can't be, you can't, you...
We cannot regulate it.
You cannot regulate it, can't prohibit it.
That is correct. Now, I will tell you, if it's, if for some reason the sign is in the road right of way...
The right of way.
Absolutely. Or if for some reason someone put a sign in someone's yard and that person did not give permission for the sign.
Sure.
Yes.
But that one on the outbuilding is a permanent sign?
There's 2 of them.
There's 2 of them on that same outbuilding?
2 sides.
Where's the second one?
The other facing the, facing...
Both facing kind of Pinecrest.
Viewmont, Viewmont and Pinecrest.
Viewmont, okay.
The corner of Viewmont, Pinecrest and Pinecrest, yeah.
Yeah.
But it doesn't make a difference if it's permanent or not.
It's from November 24th, here we are.
Yeah, here we are, 6 months later.
But, that notwithstanding, I understand what Bridie says, I did a little bit of reading about ORC and the state, federal, federal law, a little bit about restricting about, but I find municipalities do restrict it. Maybe they just, townships don't have that kind of, I don't know. That's for Bridie's.
They try to. I will tell you, they have that in their zoning resolutions, for sure. Lots of townships do. But I will tell you that I think we need to probably take another look at our sign regulations.
But the Supreme works it otherwise.
Correct.
Yeah. So, they might have it, but they're in, they're in, they're not in compliance, basically, by having it in there.
Probably not have a good...
We wouldn't win that, we wouldn't give that to people.
Right.
The question was more, was related to the rural characteristics of our community and why under this particular, we've, at least all the years I've been living here, we've never had these, I've never seen them up for months and months.
Oh, yeah. The one that comes to mind, right on Johnny Cake, because I knew the guy, because he used to come in my parents' grocery store. He, oh, I can't, his name escapes me right now, right across from Ridge Land.
Across from Ridge Land?
The condominiums there?
Yeah.
Right on, right on 84. He's had it since the 80s, since maybe the late 70s.
On the building or...?
Tacus, yep. It's, he puts up on his garage.
On the garage.
Oh, yeah.
He sold that house, I think.
Did he?
I think so.
Yeah, I mean, I've known, I've known him all my life.
He used to come to visit us regularly here.
Oh, I bet he did. Yeah, 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 no, absolutely. Look, my parents own a grocery store in the township, everybody came in there. Everybody was our friend.
And there's banners and flags.
Sure.
Things like that, that are still out there.
Still, yeah, oh, yeah.
Everything is, right, I mean, it's political free speech is just about, right?
Well, maybe we can. Next on the agenda, after solar, are we going to do wind? Or do you want to jump into signs? We got to keep Heather busy.
I prefer to look at signs, because I have brought that up a few times to you.
Sign is very complicated. Frank, remember, we were, the township actually put a committee together to develop the sign regulations a number of years ago. And Frank and I served on a committee, and we had several meetings and lots of discussion.
Lots of discussion.
When was Reed v. Gilbert?
2015.
2015.
It's already been almost 10 years.
10 years.
Yeah. The Reed versus, yeah, Gilbert case was 2015. But we had just, the township had, had just done a comprehensive update to the sign regs. That was before I was here, it was under Kathy Mitchell. And then the Reed case came out like a year and a half later. And after that, I, you know, I've read through our sign regs and we definitely have some, some content-based regulations for specifically temporary signs that I think we need to clean up. I think permanent signs were pretty content neutral, we're not regulating signage based on the message, with, which I think is one of the biggest things that came out of the Reed case. Because if you are regulating, if you have to read the sign essentially to know how to regulate it, you could be subject to strict scrutiny. And that is the higher test that the Supreme Court would have, you know, to challenge a community. So, I know that currently and under some of our temporary sign regs, we have different allowances for real estate signs and contractor signs and things like that. So, we are very careful when enforcing, you know, those sign regulations, because if I have to read it again to know how to regulate it, I probably shouldn't be regulating it.
Interesting.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll see what happens soon.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
You had none, Rich, and I had none. So, next, Heather, your on the spot, zoning inspector report.
Okay. All right, so I got, I'm just going to give you a little bit of April zoning activity. So, during the month of April, we processed 42 zoning permit applications, which was pretty much on average what we did last year, and collected just over $5,000 in fees. The vast majority of the permits were for residential projects, including 10 new accessory buildings, 8 decks, 8 fences, 4 new single-family dwellings, 3 additions onto homes, and with the remaining being for smaller yard structures. We also completed 102 zoning inspections and issued 20 certificate of compliances for projects that were completed. Last month, the Board of Zoning Appeals had a hearing, thought I would just update you on some of their cases. They had a variance application for a property on Squire's Court to permit the property, they actually approved a variance application that allowed the property owner to have chickens poultry on their lot that was less than 1 acre. And then they also, with that same application, they approved that property owner to locate the chicken coop 5 feet from the rear property line, instead of the minimum 25 foot. So, I just mentioned that, so you can kind of have an idea of what kind of things are going in front of the board and what's being approved. They did approve it with some stipulations, some conditions. As you know, if you're interested, you can go back and watch the, the meeting on our YouTube channel for details.
Where was that, Heather?
Squire's Court.
Squire's Court.
Which is off of Coal Ridge, off of a Johnny Cake there.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's about a half acre lot.
Yep.
Yeah. Quick update on the former Quail Hollow Hotel property. I don't know if anyone's been by this week, you might have noticed some activity. The judge did okay the sale through that auction, the News Herald reported, to Terra Silva Holdings LLC, which those 2, who are led by both Brenda Boyce and Greg Baum, those are the individuals that I had mentioned at last month that we met with, with anticipation of them getting the property. The sale price ended up being just over $3 million. I thought the News Herald, News Herald put a nice article in there. But basically, they intend to, what the article stated is that they, that over the next 18 months, they're going to do a phased revitalization of the property. They want to keep the historic part of the hotel and, and try to add some modern amenities to the place. They, the article stated that they want to offer a 5-star experience at a budget-friendly price point with a focus on exceptional customer service, aesthetic appeal, and thoughtful amenities. Didn't really elaborate what the amenities are, but they said, one of the buildings could potentially be used for office, because I know there is a detached structure. And they hope that in the next couple of months, they'll be able to release the new name and the new brand identity for the hotel. So, I think we're, they've been over there, I noticed this week, kind of cleaning things out, they've got dumpsters, they're just trying to clean stuff out of there.
Heather, any mention of a restaurant in the old CK Steakhouse or anything?
None in the article, but I know when we met with them, we talked about that restaurant being in there, and, you know, that would be potentially an asset. We don't have a lot of fine dining in the area, maybe there's potential with that, but, so, not a lot of details, but, nothing quite solid yet, but there's some things going on. So, it's somewhat encouraging, for sure, yeah.
Stay tuned.
And, what's that?
Stay tuned.
Yes, yeah. And then, lastly, the trustees, on their agenda for tomorrow night, I'm hoping that they, they approve of, a vote to issue a request for proposals. They're looking to hire a qualified planning consultant or a team to help the township in the preparation and adoption of an updated comprehensive plan.
Okay.
So, it's been over 10 years since we didn't update to the comprehensive plan, and now we're ready to see if we can hire a planning firm to help us with that. There'll be opportunities for residents, the businesses, and some of our zoning board members to be part of that process. We're still formulating that, and hopefully the consultant that we potentially contract with will assist us with determining the best way to move forward and engage with the public during, throughout the process. But we're thinking it'll start hopefully in July and go for about a year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
Public participation. Anybody on the phone?
Nope.
No? Okay. No, no other public, so we'll pass that. Any new business? Hearing none. Let's go to old business. We've got a work session. Heather has put together a, a second revised package for our solar. So, any comments on what she handed out?
I have one. In, in the beginning of the, the draft here, where we talk about the purpose, says the purpose of these regulations is to provide for the construction, wouldn't that be more like to regulate the construction and, and operation, instead of to provide for? I mean, the goal of this is to regulate.
Regulate, regulations, yep.
I think I was thinking more like to allow for.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I first said, I first said address, but then I thought, regulate really is kind of what we're doing. Rest of it looked good.
Okay, I can make that change. I, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, maybe I can set the stage again from where we left off and why I provided the information that I did give to you tonight.
You've got the floor.
All right, cool. So, at our last, last month's meeting, there was some discussion about potentially looking at, in, for residential lots, allowing the ground-based solar panels. So, in my first draft, I had recommended to you guys that we only allow for the rooftop, right, in residential districts. Then there was, the board wanted to maybe look at, okay, so what about larger lots in the township? What if that's a better scenario? What if the example that Mr. Wirtel brought up, like Mount Royal, would it be better to have the panels in the backyard versus on the roof? You know, let's look at that. So, I tried to come up with a way to present some more information about that, and I put together a map. There's 2 maps here, the one with lots of purple and green on there. This map shows the boundary of Concord Township, which is, you know, approximately 23 square miles of all the properties in Concord. This is a pretty updated map, these are parcels from April, the middle of April. The dark green parcels are the land that's owned by the Metro Parks, because I remember we had a discussion about, well, they own a lot of land, you know, so they probably wouldn't do much on those properties. So, I wanted to point out those lands to you. And then the lighter green areas, those are land that is protected open space or has a conservation easement on there, and that the likelihood of those areas being able to be developed with solar panels is very, very low, unless something changed. So, like, over, like in Summerwood and, okay, that area, you'll see all the open space. The township actually owns that open space, if you recall, and it's restricted for development over, in and all, like the RCD developments. There's a couple other scattered developments that have protected areas adjacent to them as well. And then, I highlighted in the dark purple, those are the properties that the township actually owns, just so you are aware of which ones we owned. Again, because I don't think that we're in, we're planning on doing a project, but if we wanted to, like, you at least know where the land is. And then all the other light purple parcels, those are parcels that are 2 acres and larger. So, I, we kind of, I just picked that 2 acres, because it was thrown out by a couple different board members, you know, maybe that's the threshold. So, this just kind of shows, you know, what areas would be possibly allowed to do that based on their lot size, and which areas would not be. So, like, the, the other parcels that are not any of these colors are less than 2 acres in size, or they are not zoned for residential. They are either zoned R2, the R2 planned unit development districts, or the R3 multifamily, or those are commercial areas. And we're only, the purpose of this map was just to kind of look at what's zoned residential, what is 2 acres and larger, what could potentially have ground-based solar panels. And in this, we were looking at specifically for, as an accessory to the primary use. So, say you have the house, and then they want to, they want to install solar, install the solar panels, could they do ground-based? Which properties would be eligible to do that?
So, where on this map does the sun shine the most?
I know where it doesn't shine.
A lot of places.
It's a lot of purple.
Yeah.
And I think I misspoke, I think I said earlier, this did not include the commercial properties, but it is, it's all of the properties. Except for, like, read my legend, my legend is correct. It just does not include the R3, R2, or RCD, no.
Okay.
But, you know, if, I think if you wanted to open it up to allow the ground-based in residential districts on lots greater than 2 acres, so what I did was I kind of changed some of the draft text that we were looking at last month, to maybe reflect that a little bit, so I'm at bottom of page 2. I had suggested that, and I did it in the track changes, so you can see the red, so you can see the difference from what we looked at last month versus this month. So, on lots greater than 2 acres in the R1, R4, 6, 8 districts, and all the non-residential districts, that you would potentially allow ground-based solar as an accessory use to the primary. And then furthermore, on the next page, really not changing much, other than, I thought if we were going to open it up, under number 7, under visibility, if we're going to open it up to more lots, especially residential, then we would need to change the process and maybe not allow for it to have it in the front yard by right. And instead, prohibit it in the front yard, and then if they have to put it in the front yard for some reason, then they go to BCA.
Yep, that's good.
But I also thought, okay, if you're going to allow it, maybe we should add in some screening, whether it's residential or commercial, that was something I think, I didn't think about enough the first time around. It's a little vague written now, I don't know if we would have to change that language, but I, I think that it would be appropriate to ask for some kind of screening from neighbors, especially in a residential area. So, that's why I did some of the red changes in, in that document, and I'm definitely open to hear what you guys' thoughts are on the ground-based and residential, what you think about that.
Okay.
And then after that, you know, then the second part would be like, okay, we are talking about it as a commercial, as a primary land use, which we can talk about as a separate topic.
Right.
Okay. Going back to page 1, on small solar facility. Now, solar panels and associated facilities with a single interconnection to the electrical grid and designed for, or capable of, operation that has at an aggregate capacity of less than 50 megawatts. Do we want to save principal use on a site? For a small solar facility?
What would be the principal use beyond producing electricity?
Could be connection to the grid.
To produce electricity, though, right?
Yeah. To just send it to the grid, don't use it for the house. I don't think that's our intent for a small facility.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, we do have another definition for principal use small solar energy system. So the small solar facility definition that you just read was, came from Ohio revised code. And that really doesn't contemplate whether or not it's the primary use of the land or accessory use. It's just, this is what it is, but it, it, it's a definition, you know, that doesn't really contemplate, are there other uses on the lot, or is it the only use on the lot? This is
Are you talking about the two or three up?
Small solar facility, the definition.
Oh, accessory ground-mounted? Or principal use?
Yeah.
A commercial ground-mounted solar energy system.
Primary use of?
For off-site use, for off-site use though, I don't want that. I want for the principal use on the site, not off-site.
In other words, you don't want the resident to be selling it off to?
I wanted to say with a single interconnection to the electrical grid and designed for capable of operation at an aggregate capacity of less than 50 megawatts, but the principal use is to be on the site.
Not that you couldn't sell the excess off on the grid.
Absolutely.
As a secondary.
Absolutely. But I want the principal use on the site.
In other words.
For the house.
I think Hiram sees this as somebody putting a series of panels strictly to tie into the grid, not even to their house.
Right, right. And that's not a small solar facility, in my opinion.
Well, it is, but not.
Well, it is, but. See, the principal, two or three up, one, two, three up, a commercial ground-mounted solar energy system generating less than 50 that converts sunlight into electricity for the primary purpose of off-site use through the electrical grid or export to the wholesale market. That's good. I like that one.
Okay.
But the small solar facility, I want that to be the principal use on the site with the possibility to show, to give the excess to the grid.
Do you mean to say the primary purpose or the principal use?
Well, primary, well, I had primary use by property owner, but it can be principal use on the site.
So I think the, the issue is that the principal use, though, of a residential lot, the residence, right?
Yes.
A small, small solar facility. So that's why I think we should be careful with how we use that. Plus, I don't know if you looked at the next page.
Yeah, the next page prohibits. It anyway, that's why I'm confused, Hiram. If you look at, thank you, sorry, Heather. Yeah, general provisions, number two.
Or two, whatever it is, yeah.
Okay.
But that's a principal use. That's not the small solar.
Principal use small solar.
Small solar.
Are prohibited.
Yes.
She's just defining it, what it is.
Yes.
And then over here, she's saying.
Saying it's prohibited in every district.
Okay, that's fine.
Right.
That's fine. The principal use small solar energy system is AOK. That's the commercial ground-mounted solar energy system. That's what that is. What's the rooftop on a house?
It's the next definition, the definition. This isn't a regulation, this is a definition.
I know, but what's the definition? A small solar facility that is designed for capable of operation, of operation at an aggregate capacity of less than 50. Where's it going?
It's not.
Where are you generating?
She's just defining it.
It's a defined definition.
Somebody comes forward to get a permit, or let's say, and we'd say, well, we'd consider that a small solar facility, and that's, that's prohibited.
No, it's not, no. Small solar facility is not prohibited.
Yes, it is, right here.
No, a principal use.
Any district.
Principal use, look two or three up.
Okay.
Principal use small solar energy system. That's what's prohibited.
Okay.
The solar, a small solar facility is the one on a rooftop.
Uh, don't think so.
Or, or.
Solar panels or?
Or, or mounted. But the principal use there is for the site, for the, for the residents where it's constructed.
Here. Isn't it integrated you're looking at?
No, no, the integrated is the system where it's part of, part of the building.
Okay.
The shingles or whatever else may be. So if, if we're going to argue it, let's take out small solar, solar facility. It says here, capacity of less than 50. Okay.
But if you have it defined, and then somebody comes in with a plan that equals that, you can say, well, that's prohibited in all districts. Right?
Principal use small solar is prohibited. That's what we say on the next page. Principal use small solar are prohibited. That's fine. Solar energy system, oh, okay, that's, that's it. They shall only be permitted as an accessory to a principal use or building located on that same lot. Solar en- Well, if we, if we take the one, if we take general provisions and put small solar energy system. Can we do that, Heather? General provisions, number one.
I'm, I'm looking at it, hold on.
Put small solar facility in front. Small solar energy systems shall only be permitted as an accessory to a principal use or building on the same lot. That's what I'm saying should be over here. We want to put a small solar facility on a house, a roof, or standing in a backyard. Or side door.
This principal use is an energy system, that's a facility.
No, yeah.
And we ban facilities?
No.
Yes, right here, we do. Oh, ban systems, okay, I see what you're saying.
So if you take, if you take general provisions, item three, number one, and put small solar energy systems, then I'm good.
We don't, what is small solar energy systems, though? We don't have a definition.
Facility.
Or say principal use of small solar energy systems and facilities?
Or facility, I don't.
Just add.
I, I just want to make sure that the small energy solar, or small solar, is going to be used primarily for the principal use or building located on the same lot. That, that's what I want.
Yeah.
Any definition?
Well, I think, maybe Bridie, you can chime in on that, but I don't think we have to, you don't, don't try to use the definition to, to say how you want to regulate it. I think that gets you into trouble, like, I've seen that in other sections of the zoning resolution. Like.
This is just defining small as less than 50.
Yeah, all we're saying, yeah, small solar is anything, you know, less than 50 megawatts. That's all we're allowed to regulate. And underneath that umbrella, you can have it used as the primary use of the land, which we've talked about not allowing so far, but only allowing it as an accessory use. And I know last month you were concerned about ex, like, extra being sold off, is that?
No, 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 I don't, no.
Oh, okay. See, I think under general provisions, one stating solar energy system shall be permitted as an accessory to a principal use is covered, because then if you look at the definition or what is a solar energy system, it includes integrated rooftop and ground-mounted. And then it goes on to clearly state that principal use small solar is prohibited. But I don't know if legal has thoughts on that, if we need to look at that to make sure it's ironclad or not.
So the small solar facility definition, I know you got from the ORC, you literally pulled that right from the code. But actually, I'm wondering, is it at all refer, is it at all included in our provisions other than the definition itself? I don't know that it is. And I feel like it's a very broad definition to just, you know, do you know what I'm saying? Then everything else is a little bit more defined.
Okay.
And those are the definitions that we are really referring to. But I, but I agree with that, I mean, it was in the ORC, literally, he pulled it straight from the code section. And so I guess I, I mean, not to, I'm just trying to see, I mean, really, is this a difference without, you know, without a difference?
Is that something we can come back to, Hiram?
Yeah.
Um, as we work through the other bigger issues, like where do we want these things? We could have, Bridie and I could come back next month with clarification on that language if we need to change it, or?
Okay, let's go to page two. General provisions, number three. How do we regulate that? That they're going to maintain it at all times in compliance with the manufacturer's spec? I don't know how we're going to reg-, we can say it, but I don't know how we can regulate it.
Well, it'd have to be likely complaint-driven.
Yeah, probably.
Or, you know, abandoned and, you know, like, clearly not functioning, you know? It would, yeah.
So it's something to fall back to.
Yeah.
Because you do have a.
Yes, I'd say it's more of a.
We can say it.
We're having them give us, they have to apply for a permit, zoning permit to put a solar panel on, correct?
That's what we are proposing.
When they apply for that permit, they have to submit the, again, we're not, I mean, I shouldn't say we're not, I would like that, but when they, when they apply for that permit, they have to submit the manufacturer, manufacturer specifications with that application for more, to that specific solar panel.
Yeah.
But that doesn't address the long-term maintenance of it. A hundred percent it does not, you're exactly correct. And that, that shutters on a house.
I know.
And, and you're right, it's probably driven by a complaint of some sort.
You know.
Okay.
Just a comment on that note, I did some reading on solar panels just this afternoon, and one of the things that's a concern is fire hazard. And it's not a big fire hazard, but it's, it's a fire hazard, and, and no studies have been done in detail in the United States, but in Australia, they've done that. And they said about 1.5% of their house fires are caused by defective solar panels, either defective panels or poor maintenance. And sometimes leaves get caught underneath the panels, and if there's any kind of a short or a spark, it causes a fire that way too. So I don't think it's a big issue, but kind of says to me, maybe we ought to have, when we finish this, have the fire department take a look at it too, make sure they're happy.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I'm, I, I was in staff meeting mentioning, and other, the fire department was in our staff meeting and commented to me that like, hey, if you have an idea of where these things are getting installed, we'd like to know. Just because they like to be aware going into a situation, you know?
This article also talked about the European countries, because they're kind of ahead of us, and the Germans and the British, they've reported fire hazards too. But again, it's a small amount.
Yeah.
Less than 2%, but still, worth noting to make sure the fire department's aware.
A kid cook, cooking soup on the stove is a higher percentage than that.
It probably is, it probably is, or space heaters.
Sorry, I'm not trying to.
I know. I just never thought of it as a fire hazard.
Yeah.
You know?
One point, yeah, right.
Yeah, something that collects sunlight.
Yeah. And, and it said even a shock hazard, people are working on it, people have been electrocuted by solar panels, I didn't realize that.
That grounded it, yeah.
Disconnect it first.
Always.
Going down to number four, under roof-mounted. Tell me, why do we say white or gray gridlines are not permitted on a solar panel?
I agree with about this one, so, I get it, but.
I, I mean, I mentioned last month on, on that, my thoughts was that it blends in better to the rooftop without those visual breaks in the panels. It's purely an aesthetic thing.
That's all I wanted to know.
That, that was it. I've seen it in some other resolutions, so, yeah.
Saying my solar panels have white gridlines. I bought them already, can I use them? Why, well, I'm pretty, why can't I use them?
Or that's all my manufacturer makes, and it's, yeah.
Yeah. And you did bring up that that is kind of newer technology.
All black panels are newer technology.
Yeah.
For sure. The glass is definitely changing. Every day.
Okay, so, so we have a, a black panel. We can't have gray or white gridlines, but we can have black gridlines?
That's what it's saying.
Okay.
In that article that I read, they showed actual shingles that are made out of solar panels, about this big, but all of them had grid, four gridlines.
Sure.
And when you put it all on a roof, it really looked pretty sharp.
Yeah.
You know?
Were they black?
It was, no, it was gray gridlines on a black, but the piles are only this big.
Yeah.
They're like shingle.
Yeah, there's commercials already on television about them.
Yeah. They're a little less effective than solar panels, but they're much more aesthetic.
Right, do more, but they put them in there.
It is an aesthetic, yeah. It's an aesthetic thing. And you can regulate it, you regulate it.
And that's in Britain?
That's in the United States.
Oh, okay.
Worldwide, actually. Worldwide. Yeah, they're making those panels, just shingle is what it is, the size of a shingle.
Britain's worse than we are, aren't they?
Yep, probably.
With, with, with sun, yeah.
Yeah, but they have solar panels, so.
Okay. My next comment is coming down to 5.1 districts. To me, you, you added this, and, and that's good, on lots greater than two acres in R1, R4, R6, R8. And then I get confused, that's what happens after that. I thought maybe we ought to make two sentences or three sentences out of this. And all lots and non-residential districts and shall not be permitted as a primary principal use. I thought we, we had too many, too many points bringing up, coming up in one sentence. I was wondering if we could put that in two sentences, or?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Heather, is, we already say it's not permitted as a primary principal use of any solar energy system, so are we repeating ourselves?
Might be, yeah.
Strike that last.
Strike the last part.
From Ann, Ann Chanot. I like that.
Moving on. Where am I?
Page three.
Yeah, page three, but I don't know where this goes. What, what I'm looking at is ground-mounted solar panels. Do we want to limit the number of solar panels, ground-mounted solar panels on a lot?
Keep in mind the exemptions, though, there are exempt, exemptions. A lot of Christmas lights are now, have little solar panels.
Yeah, but are they ground-mounted?
Yeah, I bought one that blows for my Yeah, I bought one that blows for my flag on my mailbox, the flag sticks up like that, and it's got a little solar panel down on the ground.
Yeah, it shines up, okay.
And it lights that light only at night.
Do you get a permit for that?
Lights the flag, it's really slick, it was really slick until I think a snowplow took it out, but.
Right.
Well, I have a solar pa, solar powered light that hits my flag.
Okay, where's the panel?
On the light. So. But what, what I'm thinking about is, here's this two acre lot. House, backyard is pretty well open, and they put up one solar panel. Not flush manner, what, what do we call it?
Ground mounted.
Pa, oh, yeah.
Ground.
Ground mounted, and then they put another one, and then they put another one, then they put another one. Do, do we wanna limit it to, you know, he, he can basically, he or she can basically have their backyard full of ground mounted solar panels.
It does get calculated into your lot coverage, so we do have that as a, as part of the restrictions or regulations.
Yeah, item five lot coverage.
It's considered an impervious surface.
Impervious, yeah, that's about.
That could be part of it.
That's about all we do.
However, can I mention that we don't have a coverage for residential districts?
Got it.
Our resolution doesn't have one, so that would really only come into play with commercial.
I, I, I'm just asking a question, number of ground mounted systems.
So, Hiram, are you saying like they come in one day, they pull a permit to do one, and then they come and do another permit for another one?
Yeah.
And then just keep coming back, I mean?
Or the next time they come back, they come back for two more. I mean.
I.
It, it, it's gonna look pretty obnoxious.
I'm just trying to think if anyone would do that and how we could stop, you know, like.
Are you gonna limit how many they could put on their roof? Because.
The size of the roof.
Okay, but then, fair, fair, a hundred percent, totally understanding exactly where you're going with this too. But now for that house to be powered off of that panel, of those panels, they're gonna say I could put it on my roof, well then I wanna do the same number of panels that I would put on my roof in my yard, we can allow them to do that. Cause that could be four, that could be eight on a roof. I get what you're saying, I, I do, I understand, and I'm trying to look at it the other way, so, okay, if that guy's got eight panels on his roof to be able to power his house, that means I should be able to, eight panels in my backyard. Right?
Okay.
In theory.
So we wanna say to the size of your roof?
I don't know. I might be able to do it.
I'm just asking.
Well, how many, how many megawatts or watts or whatever is smaller than megawatts does it take to power an average three, you know, two, 3,000 square foot house? Do we know? Like, you could even limit like no more than me, one megawatt if you wanted, and that right there would be way more than enough to power a house.
Oh, yes.
And you could, so you could put a limit in, on the amount of megawatts being produced by.
For either one.
And then it wouldn't matter how many panels they are, it just couldn't exceed, you know, whatever number, you don't have to allow up to forty, up to fifty megawatts.
There you go.
You're trying to avoid this.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
That one picture that we had last year, last week, last month. It could look pretty obnoxious.
Yeah, there was the 1.2 megawatts and the one.
One megawatt powers 500 to 1,000 homes.
Listen, yeah, so like.
Yeah.
One to two kilowatts, the average American home requires between one to two kilowatts.
Yeah, kilowatts, three of those.
Yeah, three of those.
One and two kilowatts.
Just asking.
Right, so you could like cap it in.
But then the question.
Cap it in, something.
But if you're gonna do it on power demand, you, you only prob, what it, what it, I'm just thinking out loud here, but
Yeah.
The problem with that is if I have, let's say my house is full sun, so I can generate more than one megawatt. Am I now, I have to limit what I can take and put back into the grid?
No.
Would you spend all the extra money to install all those panels? I mean, we're talking about the cost upfront to do the project, it's not cheap, right? So do you think someone would buy more than they think they really need just by the off chance that they could sell it back to the grid and try?
If they can sell it back to the grid, that's, that's, that's not even a question.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, but I'm just.
Yeah.
I'm just, I mean, that's why, this business isn't just to power your house, it's, it's to sell it back into the grid too, right? I mean, until you capture your money.
Yep.
These are, and they're heavily subsidized even still.
Yeah. Just a thought, just a thought, okay?
I think it'd be harder to do the number, but like more maybe based on the watt.
Maybe watt, yes.
Or so many square feet per acre.
Yeah, something like that.
That might be, oh, so many square feet of panel.
Of lot coverage?
So many square feet.
Come up with a calculation.
Yeah, come up with a calculation, so many square feet per acre.
All right, just a thought.
What's a thought?
Number six, Blair. Everything is good, I'd like to add at the end, on any neighboring property or right of way or surrounding roads. I don't know if that's included in the right of way, wha, what I envision is neighbor to the right, neighbor to the left, neighbor across the street, highway coming along the back road, you know, in the back of the back road. Blair from that on the Route 2.
So.
You don't want Route 2 traffic to get to Blair.
Yeah, we could just put road right away then.
Road.
Yeah, I could just put it in, in any neighboring property or road right away.
Road right away, good.
Just to clarify that.
Okay, good. And my last comment is down to abandonment. Again, how do we know? And you're probably right, somebody's gonna report the grass is growing, uh, they're not living in the house, the lights aren't on, and we don't know what's happening with the abandonment, so you probably get it from a complaint. Okay. I'd like to thank you for your work, very well done.
Do you want to cover the staff updates, your comments?
No. No.
No?
No, I didn't have any comments on that.
Okay, they're good?
I think, yeah.
Open to other comments, Mr. Chairman, now?
Absolutely.
If I may.
Ahead.
All right, I, I wanna, I wanna get back to this prohibiting it anywhere as a principal use. Recall last month, I was questioning that, are we still comfortable that, um, I think I asked Bridie that too, that we can restrict property owner from a, a commercial enterprise of principal use as a solar farm. Is it something we can actually regulate the authority to, to say thou shall not have a solar farm on your property? As your principal use?
I think the answer is yes.
I'm sorry?
I think the answer is yes.
We, we can do that.
We can.
It's, it just, something just isn't going down right for me on that, it just.
Right.
Feels like, feel like amendment one, freedom of speech, freedom of rights of using your property.
And this is where the Ohio revised code said, hey, townships, we're gonna give you the ability to regulate it if it's under 50 megawatts. It's up to you how you wanna allow, and they didn't restrict us from prohibiting it at all like ag. So remember when the, the ORC said, hey, township, you can regulate ag, but you can't prohibit it? But you can set rules for it in areas where you can regulate it?
You can't prohibit it.
You can prohibit it.
But like, but we can't prohibit solar farms over 50 megawatts, we have no control over that, they gave that authority to the county.
Okay.
So we have no say in a project greater than the 50 megawatts.
But under 50s are very big.
That's, yeah. But under 50 is still quite large, as you know, right, yeah.
That's the township's purview to regulate it.
Right, which is why.
According to the Ohio revised code, they gave that specifically to the townships.
Yeah. Which is why I'm concerned, I guess, about our manpower here at Concord, say somebody came in with an app, 48 megawatts. That's almost as large of a project that would be reviewed, you know, down at the state level, but.
Sure.
So that's why I was trying to show last month, like all the different plans that, you know, like they, they're requesting, and like, and some of the experts were saying, if you're gonna allow these, you're gonna probably want similar documentation submitted to you, and what kind of capacity do you guys have to review that with your boards and, and things like that?
So if we could, I'm sorry, Rich, answer, if we could prohibit it, if we can prohibit it under 50 megawatts, why can't we take it down to five? Or 10?
You could, you could allow it up to.
So we can prohibit it under 50, we can prohibit it down to fif, 10. And I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm the same, Rich, just so you know, I'm very, it doesn't smell right to me either to prohibit somebody doing with their land, it's.
Yeah.
I'd have to imagine that would get challenged if somebody wanted to.
I think it'd get challenged, but.
I think it would get challenged, um, especially as a test, you know, development, I would think that would get, that would get challenged, and it might lose, but, um, but if you can, if you can, if we can prohibit it under 50 megawatts, then why can't we prohibit it down to 10, which drastically reduces the size if somebody wanted to come in and do that commercially.
That's interesting.
So we're not, we're opening ourselves, we're allowing business.
Yeah.
But to this.
Level.
Level.
Of production.
Correct, because we just said 50 megawatts, between 500, 1 megawatts, 500, 1,000 homes.
Yeah, even 10, right, throughout 10.
Power every house in Concord.
What if a developer came in and was building segment homes, and they're all gonna be solar powered?
Well, the rooftop, it's fine.
Well, yeah.
So they all be rooftop, we, it would be regulated, there would all be rooftop, we couldn't have any.
Or they could have panels in the development somewhere.
Yeah. Like, that's what I mean, if some of the areas where the home were actually built didn't make sense, couldn't get the direct sunlight that's needed.
To do in the open space.
Could they do it in the open space, for example? Well, we have to regulate that. Especially when you get in a conservation zoning, where they're not supposed to cut down minimum amount of trees, you know, you can get in with a situation like that. I would think.
Well, you gotta cut down those trees to get that sun though, Frank, I'm sorry, buddy, they're not gonna work without the sun yet.
I know, that's what I mean.
It's food for thought, Rich, you know?
Yeah.
That we're not, we're not prohibiting it altogether.
We're limiting.
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 Cause if that's the case, if we're not gonna do that, then just prohibit it altogether. I don't even have the conversation.
How much land is needed for a 1 megawatt solar facility?
Between like five and 10.
Acres?
Acres, yeah, more upwards of nine or 10 acres.
For 10 meg, 10 acres for 1 megawatt?
We don't have to worry.
10 acres for 1 megawatt, so you wanna do 20 megawatts, 10 megawatts?
I, I don't wanna do anything.
No, no, yeah, right.
You don't wanna prohibit anything.
I don't wanna prohibit any.
So we're gonna go up to 50 megawatts, which is 500 acres.
Yeah, we don't have that.
Well, if, today, today we don't, somebody consolidates, it does whatever a developer does when they develop land, they consolidate.
Or, or if the technology changes in the solar industry, yeah.
And the only thing they're gonna do is put up solar panels, that's it.
Principal use, yeah.
And sell it to the grid.
I'm just, I'm just like passively, kinda like, it just doesn't smell right.
I don't think there's a big enough spot in here, though.
If you consolidate, you consolidate, oh my God.
If these are all individually owned pieces of land, there might be something on it.
I know, consolidate.
This one has a school, this one has a hospital.
You bring them all together.
Oh, you mean.
Yeah, consolidate, yeah, that's what I meant, sorry.
Oftentimes, these are lease agreements, so the, the owners of the solar panels don't own the property, they just sign lease agreements with all the property owners. They, they talk to like three, four, whatever, and they all sign a, a deal, and they use part of their land, so you don't even have to change lot lines or anything. So I, I, I'm wondering, like, looking at our township, you know, if we were gonna allow it, where would, might it be acceptable? From a land use standpoint, like where in the township do we think that it could likely happen that would be a, you know, a compatible land use with some maybe lower density or I'm not exactly sure what would be compatible with that, other than I know that they stick them out in farmlands, where there's sprawling land, less people kind of around. So that's, you know, looking at the maps and what I had kinda suggested to you, maybe in the R4? If someone were gonna do this kinda project, that might be the district that might work for them, I think R1's pretty developed. I can't imagine anyone finding enough land to piece together to do any kinda project that would make sense. Don't think we would, even in our RD2, our light manufacturing industrial district, not really sure if that's the best use of that land.
R4.
So that kinda pushes me, you know, back over to R4, right?
I think you can step further for you, our, our township falls mostly, and it sounds corny from south to north, right? I mean, it really does, comes off the mountain, it comes, if we go from Shartown down, down to the north, right, to North Facing Slope.
Yeah.
It's not conducive to solar.
No.
I'm just saying, it's not, I mean, it's, it's why it's big in Texas, right, it's the south, it is, it's southern hemisphere. It's, like I told you before, I looked at putting on my roof, Girdle Road, there's none, I don't have any trees around, right, for the most part, and my buddy laid it out, and he said, no joy.
Let, let me phrase it this way then, uh, for legal, so if one were to challenge, would the zone go to busy, right? I mean, is, right?
Yes, you're right.
So there is, there's still recourse here, it's not like made a law, well, the trustees have to approve this, resolution is a law, right? It's a law, but it can be appealed.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
You feel better, no?
Not really. No, I'm just, I'm just answering my own little reservation about it.
You're making yourself feel better.
Okay. So then, that notwithstanding, then on, on page three, um, I was wondering about the, the height of 20 feet for a ground mounted, is that also something that is, comes from some standard, 20 feet?
That, you know, that is our standard max height for all accessory structures in, in our residential districts, so I kinda went with that.
Okay.
What I was reading is usually the ground mount is 10 to 15 feet at full max tilt, so this would be under that.
Got it, okay.
Is that to the top of the panel, by the way?
Yeah.
Here would be, here would be all the way up.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So, um, uh, the next question I have is really the engineer and me, the, the lot coverage. I, I would say, I would say that is not appropriate nor applicable to a tilted solar panel, to, to require the applicant to include it in previous service area calculations, they just, that, that's another one that doesn't feel right. It's a little too much. Do you understand what I'm?
I do.
This is requiring calculations to include it in, because of drainage, that it's capturing water, it doesn't capture water.
No.
Yeah, and it's just, and it's on tilt, so I'm just suggesting.
I agree with you.
That, that be stricken, actually, or, or be replaced by, this suggestion was, uh, in terms of lot coverage, like square foot per acre or something. That, again, that's my concern with that, number five.
It makes sense, because it doesn't capture water, you're correct.
Yeah, and, and then similarly, because I mentioned this last month about the, the application itself, number 11, um, a, and maybe Heather can, and, and maybe there is a concern why we would require horizontal and vertical elevation drawings, rather than just a sketch to say, it's going here on the, on property, and it's gonna be 18 feet high, uh, by this, by this, and just trying to preclude the need for surveyor and engineer to prepare, that, that connotates.
Well, you wanna put in sketch?
A sketch, well, that was what I mentioned last month, but I had to make, have a reason to.
We did talk about this, we talked about the site.
I had suggested taking out site plan and horizontal, vertical, and just say sketch plan. To show the location. To show the location and the height.
Like you do for a backyard shed, same thing, sketch.
Yeah, sketch, going here.
So the fire is to the property line.
Yeah, our resolution doesn't really define site plan, I could look at that and see, we may reference site plan under zoning permit, like you submit a site plan, but the way we actually enforce that is, okay, we can print out a GIS map, and that can be your site plan, uh, we don't really require people to have that. But I can make sure that that's clear.
Okay, and then the horizontal, vertical elevation drawings.
And I think that's really comes from the manufacturer, I mean, I think they have those already.
Yeah, just give us.
Yeah, I don't think that that's asking for anything additional.
Okay, can we say that from the manufacturer?
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah.
So that it's not implying that the applicant's gotta create these.
Okay.
For me, I read that as an, I, I gotta get a surveyor, I gotta go out.
No, you just get a, a cut sheet from the manufacturer.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Okay. Good. Most of the time when you have catalogs from somebody, they'll put that information in there. Cause I know the principles I represent, all our literature has stuff like that in it already, so. Any other comments? No other comments?
The one that I had recovered, to be honest with you, but.
Other than, Mr. Chairman, just to thank Heather for the, the, the maps and the.
The maps, it was good stuff.
This was really helped, uh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Math number two shows what?
This was, um, this is, it's an aerial map of the township with the zoning overlaid it, with set at like a transparency level, so you can kinda see a little bit what's underneath it. I didn't know if you guys would have your zoning maps with you, or if you wanted to kind of, it was just another way to look at the township, um, when considering, okay, where do we have the large tracts of land, where could this potentially go if it was, we were gonna allow it as a primary use of the land? Um, I wanted to be able to show you the districts with, and I think it helps to me to even look at the other map next to it, you know, cause you see the large tracts of land, but.
It's R four.
It's R four, but some of those larger tracts are owned by the metro parks, and you can kinda see on here what's wooded versus what's being farmed. Like, if you're looking specifically kind of at the airport district area, you can see the farm fields underneath here. Um, and even up by ninety off of, um, eighty, I don't have it labeled, but, uh, State Route eighty-six, Pansville Warren. Um, as you leave the township, you know, there's some farmland out there, that, areas that are already cleared of trees, that would be more desirable probably to someone looking at putting solar, um, where they wouldn't have to do much clearing or anything like that.
So this is all current, right? This is a current map?
The zoning overlay is current, the aerial is, I think these are twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
Okay. Going back to Blair.
Blair.
Do we wanna put in airplanes?
You're, no. I don't think anybody does that.
I don't know. Do we get Blair up in airplanes from solar panels?
Tell anybody to walk outside with a makeup compact.
I can talk to Morgan about that, I'll have to ask him.
I've never seen it, but there is Blair.
I walk outside, my clothes are top of my head too, but that's.
Yeah, you're right.
Believe me, I got it. It's happening to me.
You know, we do have, what is it, the, uh?
Lasers.
I just wonder.
No.
Here comes somebody in for a landing, oh, I got blinded by the solar panel glare. Let's sue the township.
So I, I guess, um, so where are you guys at with the two different topics then? Like, are we, how are we feeling about, do we wanna allow the residential lots as well to have the ground base, if it's greater than two acres? With the requirements that we've kinda drafted up, are we feeling like that might be the better way to go? Okay, so you guys are kind of in agreement with that?
I like that two acres, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, larger, yeah, larger acres, yes.
Okay, um, and then what about as the primary use of the property, is that something, you know, that you want to look at more detailed, or where are we at with that from the board's perspective? I did not spend a lot of time drafting up regulations on that, because I, honestly, I didn't wanna go through all that, and then you go, oh, we don't wanna do it anyway. So what I did was I made you kind of a list of, you know, for tonight, you know, if we were gonna use, allow it as the primary use of the property, where could it go? What are the kinda things that we wanna possibly look at? Would it be a permitted use, would it be conditionally permitted use? What are some of the things that we would need to consider? And what kind of documentation will we want submitted with the application? So, and I'm happy to put all this in writing if this is the route you guys wanna go, but I didn't wanna go through that if it was like, maybe not.
This is a principal use to sell to the grid. I say no, cause I don't think it's gonna happen.
Yeah, when you look at this photo that you gave us to generate one point two megawatt, how much space that takes? I, I can't see anybody doing it in Concord. But do we wanna limit it? That's. You mean under fifty, under ten, or?
Under fifty, yeah.
I am, I think that's a good idea, the limit. You could limit it at five, that's still a lot, fifty acres probably.
For me, I was satisfied with Bride's, like, the answer about the, what's the, there's an appeal process. Anytime we put a, a number to something that we have not scientifically generated, we're just throwing it out, spitballing it, just, it's, makes me nervous. I, I'm okay with it not being a principal use, uh, cause there's still a process, if someone.
Well, can we put something in there that says small energy, small solar energy systems as a principal use of property later? To be developed, to, to be determined?
T V D.
Just to sell somebody, you know, we're, we're looking at it.
Thinking about it.
I mean, I'm obviously not in favor of limiting somebody to be able to do with what they can with their land, and I'll go with you on that, original thought, Rich, I'm not.
Yeah.
I think if you must.
If there's an appeal process, there's an appeal process, and let that shake itself off, it just opens itself up for potential problems down the road, but that's my opinion.
I prefer we don't make reference to that at all, let it go to the, you know, BCA, for example, if that comes up, cause then you get developers and people, a lot of times, are looking out to make a buck, and they might take something like this if it's already in a regulation and try to use it. If it's not even mentioned in there, it doesn't give them the idea, in my opinion, you know? Do, do you get any indication of a developer coming in to see, you know, to buy this land and buy that land, and, or lease these five partials that equals fifty megawatts worth?
Would I know if someone was gonna do that?
Probably not.
It depends, some, you know, sometimes I get calls from people that are asking very specific zoning questions, where then I think, okay, something must be happening, because they're asking me all those questions, but they're being confidential, not saying who they are. Usually, no, I would say, I, probably not, I, I might not know any of that. Like, someone might go around and get all that squared away, look at the zoning themselves, and just come in and file the application. But it just depends, like, it's all over the place.
But isn't there more money to be made in housing developments than, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
If you had fifty acres, you're.
The infrastructure that it would take to do that is not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not here.
Yeah. You're right, you're right. Okay.
Okay, well, then I'll make some cleanup amendments on what we had tonight, and then I know there were some other things that we already talked about at the previous couple work sessions that we, I think we're on, on agreement on maybe moving forward with, and I can repackage all of that and bring that back to you guys next month and see where you're at with things.
Okay.
To continue those.
We will review.
Look at it this way, Mr. Chairman, you're putting chickens on half acre land.
I knew that was coming. No, no roosters.
You, yeah, but no roosters.
You didn't have chickens, but no roosters.
I watched the zoning meeting.
We're all without your rent.
I know.
We're all without your rent.
I just looked at my note here, a chicken.
That's for the kids. I haven't wrote down the street.
Chickens for the kids.
Yeah, those are, chickens are strictly for the kids.
Yeah, so they can go gather the eggs for.
Great.
Okay.
Not my neighbor.
I know a neighbor there.
Well, it's, it's in mind, but it's. My neighbor has chickens, but no roosters, the rooster is the next development over, and we hear it.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, number two. Under old business is table until July twenty twenty-six. So our next meeting is June third, month six of the year, so we're halfway through.
Unbelievable.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn in a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
That was fun.
Yeah.